It's that golden hour, so I'd like to call this Stanley County Board of Commissioner a regular meeting for March the first, 2021, to order. And would like to welcome everyone that's with us tonight. Crowd's a little bit bigger than some we've seen. We know that people are still staying at home, but there's people that are watching Commissioner meetings on YouTube. We welcome you also. At this time, I want to open the meeting with an invocation, so if you would, please bow. Father, we do thank you for the opportunity to gather as commissioners and as citizens for Stanley County. And Lord, we just ask that you would direct each of us that are making decisions to make the decisions that would be pleasing to you, first of all, and to the citizens that we work for. And we thank you for our great county of Stanley. It's a great place to live, a great place to raise a family. We thank you for that. Just be with us, guide and direct us, in Christ's name I pray, amen. You would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the commissioners would look over the agenda, and if there's any adjustments to the agenda, please let me know what they might be. If there's no adjustments, then I seek approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to re-approve the agenda as presented.
We have a first by Vice Chairman Jordan and a second by Commissioner Allman. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The agenda has been approved. And first on the agenda tonight would be public comments, but no one has signed up for public comments. But I'm going to give anyone in the audience time, if you would like to come and make public comments. Seeing no one moving toward the front, let's move on to the second item of business, and that's the Airport Authority Board Appointments. And the presenter is Mr. Mike Harwood, who is the chairman of the Airport Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and commissioners, appreciate the time. As you know, we have two members that are, have reached their appointed timeframe and will be rolling off the board, starting in the April meeting. And as a representative of the Airport Authority, we had quite a few really, really good applicants as far as naming the airport as one of the boards they wish to serve on. However, this time, we do come to you with a recommendation from our standpoint, certainly understanding it's just totally up to you guys who you appoint. But we would like to recommend the reappointment of David Rudisil. Rudy has been with us, is just now really getting up to speed and understanding what's going on at the airport. And I think most of you know Rudy is a great citizen and has been a very good board member. And in this particular time, we also have an applicant that is unusual from what we've had in the past, where we have Jacqueline Plumlee that we would like to recommend. And Jacqueline comes to us as our air traffic control chief at the airport. She's been out there since May of 2005 and has been a vital member of the air traffic control facility at the airport. And with her guard experience and the opportunity for her to bring things to us from the guard side of the table, which, as you know, is a vital relationship we have at the airport, we feel like she would be a really good member for you guys to consider as well. And as I said, there's some really good applicants. It's up to the commissioners, but we had an opportunity here to add a guard member who's on our field and wanted to come with you with that recommendation, just from our side of the table. And so that's really all I had. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Harwood?
Okay.
Don't believe you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Jacqueline Plumlee and reappoint David Rudisil for terms expiring March 31st, 2025.
We have a motion to reappoint or to appoint Ms. Plumlee and also David Rudisil from Vice Chairman Jordan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion, sir.
Second by Commissioner Effer. Any discussion? Hearing no other discussion, let's vote. All in favor of those two applicants to fill the airport board appointments, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Next on the agenda is the planning board appointments, and the presenter is Bob Rimsburg, the planning director. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and board members. It's good to be with you this evening. As we do basically once a year, come before you with a need for appointments to the planning board. That's a seven-member board. There are currently two vacancies on the board and two terms expiring. One of the vacancies, of course, is your own, Scott Effer, due to his election as a county commissioner. So that position, he was up, would have been up for reappointment, but having, serving on your board is an opportunity now to appoint someone new in that place potentially, if you so choose. And then Michael Williams and David Underwood are also eligible for reappointment. Those are two positions. James Shepard, as mentioned in the packet of information you received, resigned from the board because he moved out of county, so that created a unexpired term. He's eligible for two years. The other three positions available are for three years. The, of course, Michael Williams and David Underwood are currently appointed. They're eligible to be reappointed, and as noted here, both have served well in that position. We don't come with recommendations from the planning department, but allow you to appoint whoever you think is best for this board and be happy to work with anyone to make sure they're up to speed and trained as we work through having a complete planning board. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Any questions of Director Rimsburg?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, we reappoint David Underwood and Michael Williams, and that we appoint T.J. Smith and Tim Fesperman, and that Mr. Williams, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Fesperman resign from their prospective boards effective immediately.
The prospective boards that they're currently serving.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think Mr. Williams and Mr. Smith are on the Health and Human Services, and Mr. Fesperman is on the Board of Adjustments.
And which one that you were making the motion on would you have to fill the term that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith could fill Mr. Shepard's term.
If I knew you were going to take such a couple of these notes, I wouldn't have written all that out. Just to be, so we're on the same page, you're nominating Mike Williams, David Underwood, and Tim Fesperman for terms expiring on February 24th.
Yes, sir.
And then T.J. Smith, term expiring February 2023.
Yes, sir.
And we will, in the same motion, resign T.J. Smith and Mike Williams from the solid Health Services Agency effective immediately.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Fesperman from the Board of Adjustments. That's exactly what I was going to do. I wish you'd saved me the notes.
Does that mean you want to make a second?
Yes, sir. I'll make a second.
Okay.
Had to be sure our notes aligned.
Okay. And the commissioners have any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make sure. You said Mr. David Underwood's term's coming off. We're not going to reappoint him. Is that correct?
No, we do. Yes, sir. We reappoint him.
So we've got four slots with three other people coming in? Is that right?
No, you have.
My candidate, Mike, my candidate, David Underwood, will be reappointed. Tim Fesperman will be attached to the third slot for a full term of T.J. Smith will be attached to the slot for a short term.
I got you. Okay.
Four total.
Any other questions? First and the second. All in favor of those that were listed, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't need, know if I need this as a motion or just to put it on the agenda that the two Health and Human Services board vacancies and the Board of Adjustments be on our meeting in two weeks.
Three fifteen.
Yes, sir.
Yep. We'll bring that forward. Bob?
We can do that. We, as you may know, the Board of Adjustment is a nine-member board with two, actually seven, how to put this? It's a seven-member board with two alternates, so there are nine people. So we do have alternates in that position, so there's no rush, you might say, to appoint
Board of Adjustment.
A Board of Adjustment person. The normal time period for Board of Adjustment appointments is in June, July.
Yeah.
July. So, you know, we could either continue operating as is until July with a vacancy, or we could, we can, it's your pleasure.
When is Mr. Fesperman's appointment up?
He was just appointed this past year, so it's very.
I would just like to see those vacancies filled as soon as possible.
Sure. We can present that at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And then we, Commissioner Effer and myself are both on the Board of Health. We will notify them. I'll notify them tonight, and then maybe try to have nominations on our Thursday meeting to bring back to this board for our next meeting.
And any other commissioners that know citizens that would be interested in serving on, on a board, please let them be notified so they can submit an application.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We got the new board, the new policy on the boards, but yet we still have people who are, you know, before we had the policy, they said they want to be on eight or nine or 10 different ones. Are we going to, I forget what we decided, are we going to go back to them or maybe send an email to them and asking them to resubmit so they could cut it down to the three that they would like? Otherwise, they'll keep coming up, you know, Tyler will still have to go through this.
Peter, the way I understood it at our planning retreat, we were going to wait until boards come up for reappointments, and if it's one in June, if somebody's serving on a board that may not be in line to be reappointed, but they're serving on two boards, I was thinking that we were going to contact them.
That's not my, that's not my question.
His question is, for example, we changed the way the form was. The old way, people could sign up for all 17 boards, and a bunch did. We've now fixed that where they can only choose three. Would it be burdensome, Ms. Tyler, if you were to just simply email them all and go, hey, we have a new form? Could you please just resubmit your applications if you're still interested and please pick three? Would that be something you could do without a big burden on your job?
I can just work it out. It'll take a while, because we do have people that apply.
Yep. That was what you wanted, right, Commissioner?
Yeah, because otherwise, where she still has to, every time there's a board, put 17 people in front of us when.
You can just go through your entire book of lists and throw the old ones away, right?
Anything else? Hearing nothing, let's move on. It's plat review officer resolution. Bob Rimsburg, planning director.
All right. As many of you know, if you record a plat with the Registered Deeds Office before that plat, especially for a minor subdivision or recombination, needs to come before the, before plat review officer. Currently, Paul Reynolds and myself are serving as the two plat review officers for the county. We have since, in the past month and a half, two months, have had Bailey Emrich, who's our planner, have training with the Secretary of State's office on how to be a plat review officer. So she is prepared to step into that role and be an additional plat review officer. And in speaking with Paul Reynolds, with the Mapping Department, G.I.S., we determined that it would be also good for Dane Henson and Matthew Boland, who work with him, to also be there. This gives us some redundancy, some backup, in case some of us are out of town. And again, we'll make sure that, Paul especially, make sure that Dane and Matthew are brought up to speed and learn that. It's up to the Board of Commissioners that you can actually appoint anybody in the county to do this. Andy and I have talked a little bit, and the idea is probably very wise to have the person be a county employee so that we can hold them accountable, or maybe I should say, Mr. Lucas could hold them accountable, to make sure that, you know, if something does go awry or people start not following the rules on this. But there's some specific things a plat review officer has to look for on a plat and make sure that those things are in place before the plat makes it to the Registered Deeds Office. And then Ms. Louder at the Registered Deeds Office will, you know, review them, or they're her staff, and then make sure that they meet all their standards and sign off. People in the Registered Deeds Office cannot serve as plat review officers. So that's a kind of statewide rule, so you have some separation of duties here. So I have a resolution before you that would appoint those five people and eliminate anyone that may have somewhere in the past been listed as a plat review officer, but that would be Paul Reynolds, myself, Bailey Emrich, Dane Henson, and Matthew Boland, and we would be serving as the plat review officers, again, based on this resolution.
Any question of Director Rimsburg?
Mr. Chairman. Make the motion to approve the resolution.
Commissioner Zach Allman made the motion to approve. Seconded by Vice Chairman Jordan. Any other questions or comments? All in favor for this resolution, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. a regular meeting for March the first, 2021, to order. And would like to welcome everyone that's with us tonight. Crowd's a little bit bigger than some we've seen. We know that people are still staying at home, but there's people that are watching Commissioner meetings on YouTube. We welcome you also. At this time, I want to open the meeting with an invocation, so if you would, please bow. Father, we do thank you for the opportunity to gather as commissioners and as citizens for Stanley County. And Lord, we just ask that you would direct each of us that are making decisions to make the decisions that would be pleasing to you, first of all, and to the citizens that we work for. And we thank you for our great county of Stanley. It's a great place to live, a great place to raise a family. We thank you for that. Just be with us, guide and direct us, in Christ's name I pray, amen. You would join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If the commissioners would look over the agenda, and if there's any adjustments to the agenda, please let me know what they might be. If there's no adjustments, then I seek approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to re-approve the agenda as presented.
We have a.
But then, after you work with them a while longer, you know how they want things sent to them, you know? We do a lot of electronic submittals and everything to them now, but once we got past that first year, it's been, I'd say it's been good ever since.
Mr. Henson, is this the first increase they've had?
It's the first, yes. Yeah, the last four years have been the same, and that does include the Medicaid portion of the audit also. They're including that now in with the regular contract. Before, we may not have had to have that part every year, and that part's about 50, 5,500. But now, it's a normal thing you've got to have done every year.
Any other questions?
Don't hear any more questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to re-approve Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams, who came to perform the 2021 audit.
First by Vice Chairman Jordan, second by Commissioner Allman. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. I'd like to recognize David Jenkins for a COVID-19 update. David's Health and Human Services Director.
Good evening, Chairman Lohman, commissioners. Hope you're doing good this evening. I did have a presentation put together, but unfortunately, we're having a little tech issue, so I'll be sure to send that to you first thing in the morning. So bear with me as I try to walk you through this without the visual aids this time around. Okay. Latest information as of 5:00 p.m. today, our total positive cases through 2/24 is currently at 6,584. Daily new positive cases reported were 48. Keep in mind, that's over the weekend, so those numbers are up from what you saw on Friday and some of the previous days, because you're accounting for Saturday and Sunday. Current hospitalizations, we're good to see, glad to see that number down to six. Total deaths still unfortunately 128 for Stanley County. Health Department vaccination first doses are at 6,090. Vaccination second doses are 2,051. We are currently in our phase, our group three frontline essential workers, active childcare and school workers. So we've worked through a lot of our healthcare workers, long-term care, staff and residents, as well as our older adults, and we're working more with vaccinating our frontline essential workers. In fact, we had a pretty large clinic on this past Saturday where we vaccinated approximately 460 school, public school workers and, and our daycare workers. Very thankful for the public school nurses helping us out with that event. Also, we had several folk, a couple folks from H.M. Assistos with that event as well. It was a pretty good turnout. I'd say pretty much went almost flawless. A few tech issues we're still trying to work through, so, and, but we already hit, we able to hit a lot, a good portion of that group in the frontline essential workers category. So today, we actually opened it up a little bit more because we're not getting the calls from our 65 and older, so we're going to put a call out to all our 65 and older, letting them know, hey, if you want to get vaccinated, now's your chance. We'll go ahead and get you on a schedule. There's plenty of openings, because we're going to be opening it up pretty soon. So I want to make sure that those folks know that if they want vaccine, please come on in and get it. We're still receiving our Wednesday shipments and notifications on Friday of the next week's shipment, so we are due for another 800 doses this Wednesday. That is good news. Of course, we've been, we've been playing catch-up a little bit with the 1,500 doses we had last week, so we've been busy at trying to get all the vaccinations in arms. Total vaccinations received to date, first doses at 6,100, second doses is at 3,900. Did want to mention the COVID vaccine hotline. Once again, it's 980-323-0205. Please feel free to share that information, get that information out. Today was the first day, as I mentioned earlier, that we really saw a lull in our call-ins. Usually, our hotline's really on, you know, high volumes coming in, so I'm not sure if folks are getting their vaccine elsewhere, or they're interested in the new Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine that's coming across. It's coming up shortly, actually arriving in the state sometime this week, which is a one-dose regimen of vaccines, so, but it's really got us kind of scratching our heads where, you know, where did everybody go when there was such a high demand? So we'll continue to monitor that. Vaccinations as of 3/26/21, I'm going to share a little bit of information with you. Our first dose is administered, and this is not just Stanley County Health Department, this is county-wide with 7,284. Second dose is administered is 3,890. So as a percent of the population, we're about 11.6 of first doses as compared to the state average of 12.7, about a percent difference there. Second dose is vaccinated, percent population is 6.2. North Carolina is seven, currently at 7.5, so there's about a percent difference there as well. So you've heard a lot about Johnson &amp; Johnson. I want to share a little bit of information with this upcoming vaccine. It is a one-shot vaccine. It has been authorized by the U.S. FTA. We should see it in North Carolina this week. Like Pfizer, Moderna, it's scientists built on decades of previous work with vaccines. It'll help prevent COVID-19 and extremely effective preventing hospitalizations and deaths with no serious safety concerns. Possible temporary actions vary similar to the other vaccines we have, sores, fever, headache, or feeling tired and achy for a day or two. Does not require diluting or mixing, and is stored under refrigerated conditions, that's two to eight degrees Celsius. What we're currently storing with the Moderna is at negative 22 degrees Celsius. The nice thing about that is that a lot of the private providers do not have the refrigeration capabilities or freezer capabilities, so with this vaccine, it'd probably be able to get it in the hands of more enrolled providers, which means we'll have more vaccine that'll be out in the community from different enrolled providers, other than the Health Department and a few pharmacies. So it's easily shipped, stored, administered, and as I mentioned, hopefully have an increase in number of vaccination sites moving forward in the county. We're getting as many people as possible vaccinated quickly, and this will help spread the COVID-19 variants as well. So it's just another tool in our tool belt with this new vaccine coming, coming our way. Executive Order 195, you probably heard that from the governor last week, a little bit of positive news on lifting the modified stay-at-home order for homes and businesses and that can close to the public between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. The number of people who may gather indoors will increase from 10 to 25, while 50 remains the limit for outdoors. Their curfew on sale of alcohol for onsite consumption has moved from 9:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Some businesses, including bars and amusement parks, will now be open for patrons indoors as they adhere to new occupancy restrictions. Many businesses, venues, and arenas will have increased occupancy, both indoors and outdoors. So with the easing of the COVID-19 restrictions, 30% capacity limit may not include, may not exceed 250 persons in indoor space, and that means bars, conference spaces, lounges, indoor areas of amusement parks, movie theaters, entertainment facilities, sports arenas and fields, and other venues. So we'll see a little bit more activity surrounding those, those areas. 50% capacity limits for restaurants, breweries and wineries, facilities, pools, a few new ones are now, it's opening up for museums and aquariums, retailers, outdoor areas of amusement parks, salons, personal care, and tattoo parlors. So those are some of the changes or easing of restrictions in some of those places of businesses. And finally, as always, we encourage you all, everyone, to wear a cloth face mask or covering of two layers or more, wait six feet apart, avoid close contact, and wash or sanitize your hands off in to prevent the spread of COVID-19. If there's any questions or comments, I'll do my best to respond.
Any questions?
I appreciate your presentations and stuff. Just want to remind people, just because the curve's on the way down, we just have to stay focused on doing the three, the three things, because we've seen this before. It's been up and down and up and down, and it never quite comes. and up and down, and it never quite comes down to where it was before, so you always start at another level. And, um, yeah, we're not out of the woods yet. We just got to remain diligent on that. And I appreciate all the information you've been bringing us over the last few months.
Director, do you, do you think, um, I know Stanley County has been doing purely Moderna thus far. Do you think we will get the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine here?
I would imagine if I had to, I hate to speculate, but I imagine we would, uh, based on availability and dependent upon what the state gets. So maybe it end up being a combination of more than one vaccine, but, um, from where we stand, a one dose would certainly make it easier trying to, you know, get every, as many people as possible vaccinated.
In half, 100%.
In half.
Right, right off that, you know, that's good.
Instead of second doses, we can spend four days or five days first doses and get more people.
We all do it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
When, uh, someone gets a vaccination from Walgreens, are you all notified?
No, sir, not directly. Now, we do have the data that comes out once a, a week. Chairman Lawhan, it just kind of gives us the overall numbers, but, uh, they don't notify us, um, that the vaccine's been administered.
But if someone receives a vaccine, are they in the numbers that you gave out earlier?
Yes, sir. That would be total number for the county. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? How, how does the board feel about having an update on a monthly basis rather than every meeting?
I'm fine with that. I think you've done a great job, and we had that big, the last two months have been pretty vital, because we were switching from testing to giving out the vaccines, and I'm fine with myself once a month.
And I'll add to that, if you, um, so people know, just like this meeting is, is broadcast, the Health Department meeting is open to the public. Um, I believe we do it on Zoom. Is that right, Director?
Yes, sir.
There's a public Zoom link. People can log in and watch.
And it'll be on Facebook Live as well.
Yep. So follow the Health Department's Facebook page. You can log in and see it there, because Director Jenkins will tell this exact same speech again on Thursday if you missed it the first time around.
And as always, feel free to reach out directly to me if there's any questions, concerns. We're happy to respond as always, because you all have done a tremendous job of helping to share this information with our public and our community. So thank you all for your support.
Everybody else okay with this monthly? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. If you would, uh, commissioners, look over your consent agenda. And I seek adjustments or either approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion from Commissioner Allman and a second from Vice Chairman Jordan. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carries seven oh. Time for board comments, announcements, committee reports, and I'm gonna start with Commissioner Ashutov.
Just two quick things. First of all, across the street from me, behind Lutheran Church, the Boy Scouts, I believe it was Troop 82, and Ray Ritter, they put up a American flag disposal site to where, if you don't know what to do with your torn, tattered flag, you could drop it off there, and the Boy Scouts will take care of it for you. So our lady dropped off like six of them Saturday or Sunday morning, so keep that in mind, folks, and thank you to the Boy Scouts for doing that. And then I went over to, I saw the, the Montgomery Herald where they were having an open house at the Central Montgomery High School. So I drove over there Saturday afternoon, and the person who sat in your chair earlier, co, former Chairman Matt Swain, was at the door, and he gave me a personal tour of the new facilities over there, and they're really, really, it's really, really, really nice. And they're gonna have 739 students. I mean, think about it. They've had the same problem as Stanley County, man, just the student numbers is small. But the, the school holds 1,000, and, um, if y'all get a chance, I'd suggest y'all just go over there if they have another open house and just check it out. It's a real nice facility. They're lucky because of the proximity to the college, they were able to offer and get more money to work on their CTE programs.
Commissioner Efer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Director Jenkins, I appreciate you sending that email out this afternoon. Uh, I shared it with a couple folks, and I think they, uh, they got in line, they got their shot, so thank you so much. We don't want to waste any of those. Uh, again, thank you for all that you do. Um, continue, like Peter said, continue to, you know, wait six feet apart and, and wear your mask and do something your mama always taught you to do is wash your hands. So, uh, thank you.
Commissioner Barbie.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Jenkins, I, I got my second shot a week or so ago, and, uh, so, and all the horror stories I heard about the second shot, uh, it was easier than the first one, so it worked out good. So don't hesitate getting that second shot. I know. But, uh, thanks for all that they do at the Health Department. Uh, my son was custodian, and he was in the lineup, and he says it, four lines deep going through there, and he did it really fast, so good, good coordination. So thank you.
Vice Chairman Jordan.
Nothing for me today, sir.
Commissioner Allman.
I'd just like to thank Dave and the team over at the Health Department. Uh, Caitlin and I went through this week too, seamless, it was very good. Also, I got an email this week about broadband and about just countywide access to good internet, and not that this is a long-term solution, but we do have 5G strong internet outside of all the, um, library locations throughout the county. But on another note, Commissioner Jordan and County Manager Lucas and I and several others are on a committee, um, that's addressing broadband, and we've been working diligently, you know, it's pretty much like an exploratory committee, and, um, things are coming together on it, and, and it seems like we're making a lot of good progress on it.
Commissioner Fur. And my comment is similar to Commissioner Barbie. I'd heard all kinds of horror stories about the second shot of Moderna, and mine was this past Wednesday at 1:15, and at about 1:15, I was getting a shot, and the, the nurse that gave me this shot, I asked her, and I've heard all kinds of rumors about problems with the vaccine, you know, side effects. And she says, yes, sir, you may get a headache, you may have some body aches, so you just need to go home and get in your recliner and wrap up in a napkin. I looked at her and I said, well, I do that anyway, so. Yeah, normal day, so. But luckily, I'm thankful I had no side effects, just like Mike, with the exception, my arm was sore, but my arm was sore with the first one. So I'm very thankful that my body did not give a fit with the second vaccination. And I also read on Facebook, and you know, when you read something on Facebook, you can believe it.
Must be true.
Not true, not true. But this particular person, uh, I know who is a retired school teacher, she did have a shot, and she had a, uh, what you call a COVID arm, which is a reaction where her arm swelled up. But I liked what she said at the very end. She said, even though I had COVID arm, I would do it all over again. So let me encourage you. If you're afraid of the vaccine, don't be afraid of it. Get it. Uh, it may save your life. So please get the vaccine. That's all I have, so I'm looking for an, uh, motion to adjourn. Got a first, second? All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries seven oh. Meeting is adjourned.